Good morning.
My lady, good morning. My name is Brown. I appeal for the appellant with Mr Leon Glenister.
Yes.
My learned friend, Mr Pereira, King's counsel and Mr Waller appear for the local authority, the respondent in this matter.
Yes.
Lady, can I just check in terms of housekeeping, you should have a core bundle?
Yes.
A supplementary bundle and a bundle of authorities.
Yes.
I'm grateful, thank you. Lady, as you will have seen, this is my appeal from the decision of Mr Justice Lane, who dismissed my client's challenge to the grant of planning permission by the respondent, Tewksbury Borough Council, for a road bridge over the Bristol to Birmingham Main Line railway north of Ashchurch. Just by way of roadmap for my submissions today, the court will have seen the appeal is brought on three grounds. Two of those relate in particular to the advice which was given to the respondent's planning committee. The third relates to a slightly different issue, environmental impact assessment and the screening opinion in that regard. And what I propose to do in terms of structure is to take your ladyship through the background, which is common to all three of those arguments, then focus more closely on background which is specifically relevant to my grounds one and two, in particular, the officer's report, and at that point make my submission on those first two grounds. Then come to ground three, at which point I pick up on some of the additional background material which is specific to that ground and make my submissions there. That involves splitting some of the background summary, but it's probably slightly easier to do it that way if that's as successful as the court. In terms of common background, the court will have seen that at the heart of all three grounds on which I rely today is the somewhat unusual fact that if it's constructed in accordance with the approved plans and without any other permission being granted, the permission would result in a bridge which is simply in the middle of a field, not connected to a road at either end. And your ladyship will have seen that from the plan, which is in the core bundle at page forty, it comes immediately after our skeleton argument. And if I could just briefly take your ladyship to that, page forty of the core bundle. And the plan which is there, your ladyship will see from the top to the bottom in the middle of the plan, the Bristol Birmingham Main Line. The red line, the outer limit of the red which is shown on the plan, is the outer limit of the planning application. Your ladyship will see in the centre of it, the bridge itself, with the embankments that are necessary to get over the line. There are the connections which are shown to the west with what's described as a temporary Western Hall Road, and then to the east, there's also a temporary Eastern Hall Road. There are construction compounds on either side of the bridge. It is worth pointing out that both the hall roads and the construction compounds are temporary, permission is required for them, but once the bridge has been constructed, the intention is that those would be removed and that what one would be left with is effectively the bridge and the embankments plus the two attenuation ponds, which one sees in the centre of the drawing and on either side of the main line. So the access road would go. While I have this out, can I draw attention to two other matters? The first is to the north of the Western Hall Road, your ladyship will see a black box with grade two listed heritage assets. That is the location of two grade two listed buildings, I'll come back to in my submissions later. And my lady, the other point I draw attention to at the moment is in terms of the wider geography, there is a blue line to the north of the listed buildings that runs from east to west, that there's a brook. Your ladyship will see on the left hand, the westernmost boundary, the motorway. And my lady, I draw attention to that because if one then looks at effectively where the bridge is located and where traffic which is going over it will either come from or go to, in terms of the ability to connect that bridge to the road network without a brand new motorway junction, which nobody is proposing, the options for connecting it to the local road network are limited. It wouldn't necessarily need to follow the line of the temporary hall road, but one can see there's a relatively narrow band within which that final link road would go. But until there is a link road provided, and once the hall roads have been removed, the application would effectively be not just a bridge to nowhere, but a bridge from nowhere as well. My lady, the history which led to that proposal, it's summarised in the judgment of Mr Justice Lane at paragraph six to sixty-three, but I hope it will assist if I take the court to some of the key points in the chronology and some of the relevant documents. And if at any stage in this I go through matters that you've read and don't need me to to go through, then please by all means say so.
Well, you can take it from us that we're pretty familiar with the documents, but I'm not going to stop you from taking us to anything that you want us to take.
Well, if I start on that process and at any stage you feel it's unhelpful, please let me know. I can begin in March 2019, when Tewksbury and the surrounding area were awarded garden town status for a potential development of up to 10,195 new homes and around 100 hectares of employment land and reflet related infrastructure. And that was based on a document known as the Tewksbury Area Draft Concept Master Plan, which the court has in the supplementary bundle at page three one seven. If I could ask you to turn that up, the supplementary bundle, page three one seven, it should be tab five if you have a tabbed copy. And my lady, I begin by stressing that this master plan is not a development plan document, it doesn't form part of the development plan for the area, but it's intended that it should underlie a plan which it's anticipated will come forward in due course. If, my lady, you would go to page three, well, if you can start at page three one eight. It explains that an indicative phasing approach has been taken, and in the short term, there is a reference there to phase one extending to 2031, and we're told under the first bullet point in the left hand column that road transport upgrades would be required to deliver this growth in capacity terms. And the court will see what phase one is from the table, figure thirty-two, phase one, 3,180 residential units, 46 hectares of employment land. There is also some retail floor space and an area for a school to be provided. And the area which is to be covered by that, one can get a sense of even looking at the plan at three one nine, or indeed, it may be easier, my lady, to go, if one, the court would go to three two two, I think that may be easier, it's a very similar drawing. And one sees there set out phase one again, the elements of what phase one would include, the homes, the employment land, the local centre for retail, the primary school. And then beneath the phase one table, in terms of transport, there is not a transport solution yet for this quantum of development. It's a gap in the current concept master plan. All development road loads onto the current A46. Northern link needed with crossing over Main Line, joining up existing roads. And if your ladyship goes to the diagram, one can see, again, you've got the main line, which is the dashed black line going down the centre, and you can see a red line from the east to the west, which goes over that. And according to the key, that's the concept, it's a new transport link, and effectively the red arrow, the short one that goes over the line, is an indicative indication of the bridge that is there proposed. And at three two three, the master plan continues additions to the existing road pattern necessary to enable phase one are illustrated on the diagram below. And again, one sees exactly the same thing, a new link road to be provided with a bridge that goes over the main line. If your ladyship would then go to page three two four, the transport strategy, lady, the only part here that I draw attention to is right at the bottom right hand corner of the page, the paragraph that starts, the traffic model tests indicated the assumed scale of development could have a significant impact on the highway network as there's insufficient capacity to absorb additional demand. Without additional measures being employed, there was a significant increase in delays and journey times along all key routes, including the A46. My lady, as I understand it, that is part of the rationale for the new link road and the bridge to be provided.
So can you just remind me where you were reading from?
It's page three two four of the bundle, my lord, and it's the very last paragraph on that page, the bottom right hand corner.
Yeah.
On that page, I apologise, my lord. Yes, and then, again, my lord, three two five, one sees a plan that is provided there. And then, if the court would go then to page three three one, there's a list of short term enabling interventions under the heading local connectivity, and a reference to a northern link between Hardwit Bank and Ashton Fields over the railway line. And at the bottom of that page, in the left hand corner, you'll see the delivery of the northern development plots rely on the provision of a northern link over the main rail line, overcoming severance and completing the link between the existing local roads. So, common ground in this case, the delivery of the wider housing and employment development as part of phase one relies upon the bridge link being in place. And it's on that basis, my lady, I say, and I don't believe there's any dispute about it, that phase one relies upon the bridge being built. It is the reason why it's being proposed in order to enable phase one. Indeed, as we've pointed out in our skeleton argument, that paragraph eight, there doesn't appear to be any dispute that the bridge doesn't serve any purpose other than to enable that development. There are cases, including one in the authorities bundle, where there was a freestanding need for a bypass. Housing may come along on the back of that, but the bypass was to be provided in any event. On the evidence that in this case, this is a very different situation, the reason for providing the bridge is not because of a freestanding existing problem with transport, it is to facilitate that development. As the court will have seen, the overall proposal for phase one was for 3,180 homes, but within that, there is a smaller quantity of development of 826 homes, for which there is an even greater connection. And in order to demonstrate or illustrate that point, can I start by taking the lady to the judgment of Mr Justice Lane, which sets out certain points of background detail, which I think the parties were happy to take from the judgment rather than replicate all the documents in the bundle today. If your lordship goes to the core bundle, tab four, and in particular, page sixty-two, Mr Justice Lane sets out the background. Paragraph eleven, he concludes on the summary of the master plan, observing that up to that point, it might have been thought that an application for a bridge was unlikely to be made for some time, but he then refers to funding which was made available by the government through the Housing Infrastructure Fund. And I do draw the court's attention to that the reason for the Housing Infrastructure Fund, it's called Housing Infrastructure Fund for a reason, it is to support housing delivery through the funding of vital infrastructure. And at paragraph twelve, court will see, in order to support the delivery of the JCS and the work being undertaken, defendants submitted a marginal funding bid of 8.1 million pounds to deliver the bridge, which in turn would facilitate the development strategy of the wider Ashchurch area. And according to the report of the chief deputy chief executive, the fund would unlock a number of sites and forms an early phase of the development strategy to realise the garden town. Court will note the way it's put there, the bridge is an early phase of the development strategy. Paragraph thirteen, council told that the bid had been successful. And then there's reference of paragraph fourteen to what became the agreement between the council and Homes England, and the description of it by the deputy chief executive, Homes England documentation splits the project into the main project comprising the bridge and a wider project which includes the link roads and the housing development unlocked by the funding detailed as 826 units. Homes England has accepted that delivery of the wider project is outside of the control of this project and have agreed a best endeavours approach to delivery of this wider project. And the point which I'm sure that court will appreciate there is that since the purpose of HIF is to unlock land, Homes England generally seeks some sort of assurance that if it provides money for infrastructure, it will result in housing coming forward. In this case, was content to agree to a best endeavours clause. But again, can I draw the court's attention to the way in which it's described here, a project split into a project, a main project comprising the bridge and a wider project which includes the link roads. And your ladyship has in the supplementary bundle, the various documents which relate to that, if we go back into the supplementary bundle, if you would, and this time go back to page two hundred and eight, which is the report which relates to the final approval of the terms for the HIF funding, page two zero eight, the report to the committee, to the council on 12th of June 2019. Its purpose, we can see from the executive summary, it is to update members on the status of the HIF funding for the railway bridge project, seek agreement to enter into appropriate agreements to deliver it. And there's reference or background information in terms of the amount of the funding and the discussions with Homes England, the penultimate paragraph as to delivery dates and other contract details. And the recommendation at page two oh nine, to note the progress, to accept the funding conditions of Homes England as appended to the report, and then authorise the deputy chief to enter into appropriate agreements. In terms of the contract and its conditions, if you turn to page three one one, paragraph three point one, in section three, we're told the conditions are split into three sections, pre-contract, conditions for initial drawdown, and conditions for drawdown for construction works. And the conditions and milestones, we're told, are set out in appendix one. And then, if one goes into appendix one, there are different milestones which are provided, starting at page two one four, there's a heading halfway down milestones in the grant delivery agreement. And if one then goes to part B of that at page two one six, which is the best, the milestones which the council will use best endeavours, the court will see there the reference to 826 residential units being commenced and a milestone date given there of 2021. So that's the documents which relate to the point made by Lord Justice Lane in terms of the conditions. And those conditions were accepted by the committee, and your lordship has the note of the resolution to that effect at page two two five, and it is paragraph nine point seven point two, resolution to accept that. So, the funding of the bridge now linked quite clearly, albeit only to a best endeavours clause, but to a clause which expects the council to exercise best endeavours to deliver at least 826 homes as a condition of the funding. That then brings me to the application for the bridge. It was made in September 2020. As I've indicated, it related only to the bridge itself, didn't include any funding arising from phase one, sorry, didn't include any development arising from phase one. It didn't even include the link roads that would be needed in order to connect the bridge to the network. It's an application which was supported by a number of documents. If I can take your lordship just to a few brief references. First of all, there is a planning statement which the court has at page eighty-two of the supplementary bundle, or at least it has extracts from the planning statement there. It starts at page eighty-two. And if you would turn to page eighty-three, paragraph one one, the summary of the application, full permission to construct a bridge. New bridge is intended to assist future development of land to the north and east of the proposed application site, allow for the eventual closure of the existing signal railway crossing of Grange Road. Permission is being sought only to construct the bridge structure which will remain in place, become operational when the future development comes forward. Then at page eighty-four, there's reference in section two to the background, the concept master plan. And paragraph two two tells us, in accordance with this approach, the bridge will not be connected to the public highway as part of the scheme, will not be provided with final road surfing after construction, it will remain fenced off until future development linked to the master plan, which currently has no formal planning status, is being prepared until that gains permission for a future highway through the North Ashchurch area. Consequently, the operational stage for the purposes of the scheme is restricted to the physical presence of the bridge as a feature within the landscape. Use as an operational highway will be a matter for a future application. Paragraph two three over the page explains why it's being advanced. Prior to the formalisation, design and construction on network rail assets required, and due to the intricacies of those activities often seen as blockers, in particular constructing bridges over the rail assets is complicated by the requirement for possessions on the railway for parts of the construction, which involves undertaking certain works only in the infrequent periods in which the railway is non-operational or in reduced operation. Scheme is then described in section four at page eighty-six. Again, we're told it's to support future development of the garden town, that's paragraph four point one. Paragraph four two, the proposals identify this area's anticipated provide 826 new houses, recognise this development would not occur unless further crossings are provided, and that assumption is part of the basis of the traffic modelling. And then four three, the scheme relates exclusively to the construction of the bridge structure and associated embankments. This will facilitate future development of the northern Ashchurch development area, enabling the requisite crossing structure for a future road to be provided. Recognising the design and delivery will form part of the master planning exercise for the future housing development. And so, one sees the way that it's put there, again, the link between this, the bridge, indeed the rationale for the bridge and the ultimate development area, the ultimate garden village phase one, clearly set out. The second document which accompanied the planning application is a transport assessment, which is the next in the bundle, and it's at page eighty-eight. At page eighty-nine, section one one, one again sees there in the second paragraph, the description of the development. The third paragraph, this TA has been produced to support the ABOR only. However, for information, it will also consider the potential impacts of an associated link road that would connect Hardwit Bank Road with the B4079 via the ABOR and the development of 826 residential dwelling dwellings that could achieve access and the associated link roads. Important to note, the associated link road and the 826 dwellings will be supported by a separate future planning application that will include future assessments. And one sees there the approximate location of the bridge shown on figure one. Page ninety, scoping the first bullet point, the TA will support an application for the bridge only and not the link road or the dependent residential development. Modelling assessments of the impacts associated with the link road and the dependent residential development will be provided for information only as part of the TA. So, TA proposing to provide information about the link road, the effects of putting traffic from 826 residential units on it, but that is there for information rather than in support of the application itself. And then still under the heading scoping, the penultimate bullet point, residential trip rates generation were set out in the scoping note are consistent with the strategic model, being agreed for the dependent residential development modelling, including within this assessment for information purposes only. However, it's understood the trip rates would need to be revisited when a subsequent planning application comes forward for residential development. Ask the court to note the way that it's put there, it's not being suggested that the work that is done on modelling the eight two six is the end of the story, it would need to be updated. But clearly, the transport assessment works on the basis that it is possible to provide some information on what would happen if you provide link roads and 826 dwellings in conjunction with the ABOR itself. And then one sees in section six how that's worked out, the traffic modelling methodology. Paragraph six one summarises the traffic modelling that's been undertaken for information only, considers the impacts on the surrounding network. Whilst the ABOR could enable the link road and residential proceed, neither of these aspects form part of the current planning application, which doesn't include a permanent connection to the highway network. Consequently, at this stage, modelling is for information only. One sees the scenarios that are modelled in six point two point two. They include a do not do minimum, no link road or residential development. They include a link road, and they include a link road plus a residential development of 826 dwellings. And then in the following pages, that assessment is carried out. I don't need to take your ladyship to the detail of it. Can I briefly though just draw your attention to the figure at page ninety-three, figure six one, which shows the approximate location of the bridge and also the approximate alignment of the link road used for traffic modelling. And certainly, as regards the alignment to the west of the bridge and in between the main line and the motorway, your ladyship will see that the blue line there, it's not exactly the same as the temporary hall road, but perhaps understandably, it follows a very similar route there. Possible, certainly for the purposes of the TA, to come to a view about where the road is likely to go and to carry out an assessment on that basis. And so that is what is then done in the transport assessment. The third supporting document I refer the court to is the Heritage Impact Assessment, which starts at page ninety-nine of the bundle. And there is an executive summary at page one hundred. And if one looks to the first paragraph of the executive summary, reference to the scheme itself, and then towards the end of the first paragraph, the scheme itself constitutes just the construction of the bridge, which will be left unpaved and secure use, secure from use until future development comes forward. There's then a reference to the listed buildings, the closest listed buildings, ninety metres north of the site, that's a grade two mill house and the grade two Northway Mill. Those are the two properties that were in the black box that I showed your ladyship at page forty of the bundle. And then at the bottom of the executive summary, there will be impacts to the mill and mill house in terms of setting and views from these listed buildings. The bridge needs to be in keeping with the scale, height, massing, alignment of the buildings in the vicinity, with particular attention paid to the immediate setting of the heritage asset. One then goes into a little bit more of the meat, page one hundred and one, you have an extract from section seven of the heritage assessment. Para seven one, the scheme is thought to impact grade two Northway Mill. grade-two Northway Mill and Mill House through changes to the setting. The operational phase will also introduce changes to setting the design for the bridge place. Its height at approximately eight metres. Height and design of the new bridge will introduce further element to the landscape. This will introduce change in the landscape, change to the overall setting. Been determined that that will be a minor adverse impact is resulting in slight significance of effect to the setting of the assets. And then in terms of the impacts on the historic landscape, seven point three. During construction, there will be impacts, physical change to an area that's primarily rural, introduction of construction vehicles, development compounds visibly change a small part of a large stretch of enclosed historic fieldscapes. The land taken will also result in a change to the legibility of the historic landscape. But then during the operational period, there'll be a permanent change as the bridge will introduce a modern transportation route into a rural historic landscape. During the operation period, the landscape setting will be directly impacted through an increase in noise, air pollution and lighting. This change must be seen in the context of the modern settlement and the large motorway to the west. It's also a small part of a large historic landscape character which will remain unchanged. The period of the proposed scheme is therefore predicted to have a minor adverse impact resulting in slight significance of effect.
Can I ask what the operational period is for this purpose? It's contrasted with the construction period.
Well, it, it, it's, as I understand, well, it's.
Well, you may not know the answer, but the authors seem to have distinguished those two things.
Yes, well, it's the point at which.
Your point is that there wasn't, there wouldn't be an operational period at all.
There would be a period in which it's there and if that, it's, it's not, no longer being constructed. It's physically there. And to the extent that it's operating at that stage, its impact is likely to be essentially the visual impact that it has. But there will, once it's connected, there will inevitably be greater operational impacts, not least the traffic going over the bridge. But also, although not directly linked to the bridge itself in the sense that the traffic will be going over the bridge, the bridge will need to be connected. And it's got to be via link road. The link road, my lord has seen that the scope that there is for a connection to the roadwork network, on any analysis, that link road is going to go closer to the listed buildings and the bridge. Wherever it goes, it will have to be closer. And there will be not just the road going across this landscape, but there will be the traffic that is going backwards and forwards along the road. And that's without any assumption being made as to where the residential development would go. Although at the moment, there is a clear indication there would be development on both sides of the railway line. But, but leave that out, just simply look at the link road. But those wider operational effects are not assessed in the heritage assessment, my lord. The heritage assessment looks at the bridge itself, at the limit of what is done.
Well, that was what I was wondering, is why I asked the question. But is that paragraph, second paragraph of seven point three, looked as though, as though it was making some assumption of something other than the mere presence of the bridge in the landscape?
Well, my lord, to the extent that he does, and I, I see the reference that your lordship picks up on that. But there's no indication of how that is, there's no, no description of what that would be, of what the link road might be. And indeed, when we come on later on to the way in which heritage is assessed in the report, your, your lordship will see that in essence, the officers advised and members were directed essentially to the effect of the bridge itself.
Yes.
So that is the application documentation. I then need to deal briefly with the objections that were made to it and a little more detail the way that it was dealt with by officers and their advice. And the easiest way to do that is to take the court to the officer report, which is at page one-one-five of the supplementary bundle. And in essence, to, to take the summary of objections from the way that they were reported, which for my purposes is entirely adequate. So the report begins at page one-one-five. There's a description of the site, which is set out to start with. There's a reference at page one-one-nine to consultations. And the first of which is the objection made by the appellant, my client, the parish council. The application's to build a bridge in the middle of open farmland, has no legal status other than for agricultural use, no change of use application. Application refers to a potential roadway, potential housing development, yet there is no application for either of these options at this time, thus they cannot be considered. Question the use of public funds to build what is in effect eleven metre high concrete monolith in the middle of a field that harms the landscape. It assumes that permission will subsequently be given to construct a link road in eight hundred and twenty-six dwellings. Reference to agreement of the landowners. And then lastly, plans for the link road and the associate houses should have been completed. So the overall planning application embracing the bridge, the link road and the housing could be fully considered. There are a number of other points set out at page one hundred and twenty. If I can take you to the two-thirds of the way down, the last of the points made by the parish council before one gets to the Breeden Parish objection. Overall, this application assumes that any future applications will be approved irrespective of any reasons why they should not be so. In isolation, the project can only be considered a waste of public funds and thus it should be re-submitted with the missing applications for a link road and housing. There's then the objections by Breeden, there's nothing there. I'd take the court to Northway Parish similarly. One comes down to Chooksbury Town Council. The second and third of the bullet points there, major remodelling of the environment between the parishes needs to be considered as a whole rather than a series of individual elements without the context in which they will sit. It's unrealistic to ask local residents to judge whether or not the proposals for this bridge are acceptable if they are unable to understand the wider context. If one then turns over the page one-two-two, the objection from Ashton Underhill Parish Council, which starts halfway down, first point, the application's not transparent, fails to disclose the much larger housing plan. So the court will see there a consistent point being made by objectors about the failure to look at this in the round as part of the larger overall development. Then one comes to the consultation responses from other parties, including statutory bodies and the council's own officers. Only one matter here, my lady, page one-two-three. Just over halfway down, the views of the conservation officer set out. Construction of the bridge by virtue of its scale, design, proximity would cause less than substantial harm. Visual impact of the bridge in isolation would have a medium to low harmful impact on the setting of designated heritage assets of high significance. At this stage, the proposal would not comply with the relevant heritage policies. It may transpire that this level of harm is outweighed by public benefit. It's also accepted this perceived harm could be mitigated through a programme of visual screening. So an assessment there based only on the bridge itself, but nevertheless concluding that even on its own, the bridge is likely to be harmful to the setting of the grade-two listed buildings. And if we can then go to page one hundred and twenty-eight, which is where the analysis from officers begins. Can I just briefly draw your attention to section seven, which relates really to my ground three, but if I flag it now, I won't need to come back. And it's simply to note the point that it's accepted there that for the purposes of the EIA regulations, the proposal constitutes schedule to development. I'll come back to the particular meaning of that in, in due course, but simply to note it. And then the analysis overall begins in section eight. There is reference there to the, the master plan, the T A D C M. Page one-two-nine, a third of the way down, one sees the observation that it's not a development plan document, it's part of the evidence base. The officers then go on to summarise what Phase One would deliver. And at the bottom of the play, at the page, advise members that to deliver the master plan, the transport strategy identifies short, medium term and long term enabling interventions. The northern access road is identified as a short-term intervention which is required for the delivery of the northern development plots, which rely on the provision of a northern link over the rail line, overcoming severance and completing the link between the existing roads. The intervention schedule identifies that the northern access link alongside closure of crossing is required to be delivered between naught to ten years from the publication date of the T A D C M. And then still on page one-thirty, reference to the phasing of the application. Officers summarise the award of funding, which they tell members is for the delivery of eight hundred and twenty-six new houses. Applicant advising that the application is submitted in advance and that's due to a spending deadline associated with the HIF funding necessary for the funding to be spent by the end of twenty twenty-two. Submission documents indicate construction period twelve months.
Do you know whether it has been spent?
I.
There was indeed a variation made this summer, which has extended the time period to a date in twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
I'm grateful.
And that was, that was made in the light of these proceedings.
Yeah, thank you. The applicant also advises the ABOR's being advanced prior to the formalisation of the application documents in recognition of the considerable lead time and constraints. Design and construction on network rail assets required due to the network rail's governance, investment projects process, due to the intricacies of these activities, often seen as delaying factors. The application therefore being progressed at the current time to deliver the short-term enabling intervention timescales of the master plan and to meet the HIF funding deadline. Paragraph seventy-two of the MPPF states, the supply of large numbers of new homes can often be best achieved through planning for larger scale infrastructure, such as new settlements, significant extensions to existing villages and towns, provided they're well-located, designed and supported by the necessary infrastructure and facilities. Infrastructure can be the key to unlocking land for development to enable comprehensive, well-planned planning development solutions. Case of the current application, construction identified as a short-term enabling intervention to deliver the first phase of the T D A C M by twenty thirty-one, to ensure that the proposed development is facilitated and supported by the necessary infrastructure and facilities and to accord with the requirements to the HIF funding. And then the skipper, if one skips over a paragraph, the principle of progressing with the ABOR at the current time, it's a matter of planning balance. There are substantial benefits of seeking to achieve the aspirations and timelines of the T A D C M in the context of achieving the JCS and JCS review strategic objective, ensuring the necessary infrastructure is in place to achieve well-planned development. This weighs in favour of progressing the application at the current time. However, weighing against the principle is that the T A D C M is an evidence-based document which carries very little weight in the decision-making process. There's then a reference to access and highway issues. And your lordships, ladyship and lordships, lordship will note, the penultimate paragraph again refers to the significant concerns raised by the local community. An officer's response to that, concerns in relation to the future use enabled by the proposed bridge are understandable, but those matters are not material to this application, the assessment of which relates solely to the construction of the bridge and related hall roads compounds. And the court will note the way that it's put, are not material to this application. Over the page one-three-two, traffic impacts, construction overview. Members told that the traffic impacts are solely related to the bridge's construction, which will be over a period of twelve months. In other words, what may happen in the later stage when the bridge is actively used by real traffic is not part of the consideration. And then similarly, if one looks to the way in which other impacts are assessed, at one-three-four, there's an assessment of landscape and visual impact, including that on the A O N B. Conclusion at the bottom of one-three-five, there would be significant harm to the landscape arising from the proposal, given the scale of the development. But that's primarily restricted to nearby viewpoints and the proposal would have a very limited adverse effect on the setting of the A O N B and the S L A. Turning the page, it could be mitigated. The harm is a factor that weighs against the proposal, would be tempered by mitigation measures, which could be secured by a condition by virtue of the application site itself is not identified as a valued landscape. But it would still be significant in officers' views. Very limited adverse effect on the setting of the O M B and the S L A. I draw the court's attention to that, but it is worth stressing. That is an assessment which is based simply on the bridge on its own. But there is an adverse landscape impact. Residential amenity is the next heading at one-three-six. And at one-three-seven, the court will see the last paragraph before the heading for drainage and flood risk, two-thirds of the way down. In terms of the operational phase, the schemes construct the ABOR and leave it in place, but doesn't include the future highway that would utilise the bridge, nor the associated planned housing. Therefore, at this stage, there are no operational effects to assess in respect of noise, vibration and emissions. Effects of the operational phase would be considered when future applications come forward. Let me just check. And yes, if one then goes to heritage assets, page one-four-five. There is a reference there to the statutory duty under the, what's conventionally called the listed buildings act, to have regard to the desirability preserving listed buildings and their settings. Reference also to the advice in the national planning policy framework. And your lordships will note, or my ladyship and my lord will note, paragraph one-nine-three, one-nine-four. The references there to where there is harm, the weight that should be attached to that and the need for it to be outweighed by or balanced against public benefits of the proposal are important in this case. And then in terms of the assessment, if one turns to page one-four-six, the third paragraph talks about the, or recites the views of the conservation officer. Construction of the bridge would cause less than substantial harm. Also entail a further loss of land possibly once associated with the medieval.
Sorry, where are you reading?
Sorry, my lady. Halfway down page one-four-six, it's the third paragraph. It starts on the basis of the above. And then after that, reference to the construction phase overall.
Less than substantial harm.
Harm.
Medium to low harmful impact on heritage assets of high significance.
Indeed. And then if one comes to the penultimate paragraph on one-four-six, it's acknowledged that the impact of the bridge is not likely to be in isolation. It's part of the Garden Town initiative, which would result in additional, I think I should say additional harm, additional within the setting of the listed buildings. However, at present, the application should be judged on its own merits. And then at the top of one-four-seven, it is the case that there would be public benefits arising from the proposal, which is the first phase of the Garden Communities Programme, which would deliver housing and associated infrastructure. It's also considered there is a clear and convincing justification for the proposed bridge to facilitate the Garden Communities Programme. In this instance, heritage assets identified, considerable importance should be afforded, but officers consider the substantial benefits would outweigh the identified harms in this instance. And then I can take you to the conclusion at section nine, benefits. In the first paragraph, there are significant benefits arising from this development in enabling the delivery of the T D A C M and Garden Communities Programme and ensuring that necessary infrastructure is placed to achieve well-planned development. Reference there to the application site, parcels fourteen and fifteen, the indicative capacity for two thousand and fifty-five homes. The HIF funding model, obligation for the delivery of eight-two-six new houses. There are substantial benefits with progressing the application proposals at the current time to ensure the delivery timescale of the T A D C M is maintained, seeking to achieve the aspirations and timelines of the T A D C M in the context of achieving JCS and JCS review strategic objectives and to meet the funding deadline. And then harms, the harms are there summarised, harm to the landscape, detrimental impact on residential amenity, less than substantial harm to the heritage assets, certain points that were considered neutral. And the overall balance and recommendation concluded that the benefits, including the benefits of progressing the application at the current time, outweigh the identified harms, concluded the application is generally in accordance with development plan policy, therefore recommended that it's permitted. So that was the advice given in the officer's report. I'll come back and make submissions about it in due course. But it's right that it's not the only advice that was given. Inevitably, at the committee meeting, there was some discussion and there was oral advice given as well. And it's right that I should show the court that. The minutes of the meeting start at page one-six-four of the core bundle. Sorry, the supplementary bundle. Sorry, the supplementary bundle. And I mean, nothing turns on this, my lady, but the court will note that the meeting was held during the pandemic, it was held remotely. I say nothing turns on it particularly. The advice itself starts at page one six eight, where there is a summary by the officer, by the development manager. And on page one six nine, slightly unhelpfully, there are some very long paragraphs here. But if one looks towards the top of the page and comes down about seven lines, towards the right hand side, there's a sentence that begins, he, the development manager, indicated that. He indicated that the need for the bridge arose from the Chelmsford Garden Town, which was awarded status in March two thousand and nineteen. Fair to say it was an unusual scenario with the bridge proposal coming in advance of the rest. It was being progressed at the first phase. Reference to the government funding and the fact that it's necessary for the funding to be spent by the end of two thousand and twenty two. Delivery of the garden town was one of the priorities and objectives set out in the council plan. One of the specific objectives was to deliver the first phase of the bridge project in line with the funding requirements. Members were being asked to consider the bridge structure itself and the impacts of the construction of it. Whilst clearly the bridge was intended to serve a particular function in the future, at this stage, it was not certain what level of development it would serve, although phase one of the master plan would deliver over three thousand homes, forty six hectares of employment land. Impacts related to the wider garden town proposals would be considered in any future applications for that development. One then turns over to page one seventy. A little bit before the end, before the start of paragraph sixty four point four, one moves about twelve lines up. There's a sentence that starts, in conclusion, the development manager advised. In conclusion, the development manager advised there were significant benefits arising from this in enabling the delivery of the master plan and garden communities programme and ensuring the necessary infrastructure was in place to achieve well planned development and that the delivery timescale of the master plan was maintained. There were also benefits through job creation during the construction phase, which will provide economic benefits. Objections the community noted, the harms set out in the report not underestimated. But overall, officers concluded the benefits, including the benefits of progressing the proposals at the current time, outweighed those identified harms, therefore recommended the application be permitted. There's then a discussion that flows, including comments from objectors and from the applicant's agent. If the court would turn to page one seven two, paragraph sixty four point six, there's a proposal made and seconded that the application should be permitted. But one of the local ward members reminded members that each application had to be taken on its own merits, stressed this was not, that this was an application for a bridge and haul roads, it was not for a bridge and garden town, nor was it for a bridge and finished roads or a bridge which would help with traffic. So that's the view of one member. Halfway down the page, there is a sentence that does helpfully start from the left hand margin. A member, a member indicated that he could not support this application. As in his view, the bridge was unnecessary, there are other options, provide a more efficient way. Main concern was traffic, vehicle movements, the only other route provided. There was also concern from parish councils. And then he maintained that the traffic issues couldn't be underestimated, would end up causing major problems. Eight hundred and twenty six houses would mean additional cars. The development manager then responds to that towards the bottom of the page, still on one seven two. The development manager referenced the council mentioning eight hundred and twenty six houses, stressed it was not clear what amount of development the bridge would serve. But in any event, the application before the committee was for the construction of a bridge and the impact of that construction. He understood that this was a difficult scenario, considering a bridge which did not link to any of the surrounding road network, but would in the future be enabling developments. This was about getting the infrastructure in early to deal with future development. But the future development, the impacts of it were not relevant currently, couldn't be considered as part of the application before the committee today. Please note the way that's put, could not be considered as part of the application. And then there's a question about why finance has been raised, whether other planning consideration. And let me just check my notes. Yes, just briefly at the bottom of one seven three, there's a reference, four lines from the bottom to a member referring to the statement by the development manager concerning the fact that the committee should only consider the application for the bridge, not the traffic impact that might arise. The member said he couldn't support that view, it was essential to consider the implications that would flow from the application to significant other routes which would take the traffic out of this area and the bridge was not required. So, my lady, that's the advice and one gets a flavour of the discussion that took place at the committee. In terms of the background on which I rely for grounds one and two, that's as far as I need to take the court. Your ladyship will have seen that before Mr. Justice Lane, the appellant argued that the decision to grant permission was unlawful for three reasons. The first of those related specifically to the advice presented to the committee, to which I've just taken to the court, taken to the court, in relation to the benefits and the harms which members were allowed to take into account. And in very simple terms, the argument which Melina Junior presented was that there was a clear inconsistency in the way the matter had been dealt with. Firstly, because on the one hand, when it came to assessing harm, members were told in no uncertain terms that they could only take account of the impacts of the bridge itself, that other impacts relating to its use, to the need for the linked roads to connect it to the wider network and to the housing development which that will facilitate, they were told that all of that was irrelevant. It was not a material planning consideration. It was something which could not be taken into account. And yet, on the other hand, in circumstances where it was common ground that even the bridge on its own was harmful and therefore should only be permitted if there was some public interest which outweighed that harm. When it came to looking at what that public interest was, members, we say, were told that they should take account into account the fact that the development would facilitate the garden village programme, including the delivery of at least eight hundred and twenty six new homes and possibly as many as three thousand new homes. So in essence, the point was, when it comes to harms, we're told you can't look at the future development. When it comes to benefits, you're told that you can. And the submission advance was that it was wrong as a matter of law, that it was simply inconsistent, irrational to take that approach. My lady, the court will have seen that that argument was rejected by Mr. Justice Lane. If we go back into his judgment at tab four of the core bundle, his reasons dealing with that particular issue start at page seventy four. In particular, at paragraph seventy two, Mr. Justice Lane says there were two elements to the report's recommendation that permission should be granted. As is evident from the report, the first element of the benefit was that there was a time limited funding from MHCLG, making use of that opportunity so as to have the bridge in place would, to use the words of the report, confer the benefit of seeking to achieve the aspirations and timelines and ensuring the necessary infrastructure is in place. There is, the judge said, a crucial distinction between that benefit and any suggestion that permitting the construction of the bridge would necessarily lead to the construction of eight hundred and twenty six homes as part of phase one, although realising eight hundred and twenty six homes would be best highly unlikely without the bridge. The converse is in no sense true. Any application for the eight hundred and twenty six homes would need to be considered on its merits, having regard to all material considerations, including material harms. Not being suggested by the claimant in these proceedings, the balancing of benefits and harms in respect of any such application would necessarily be subverted or distorted merely by the existence of the bridge. And then in particular at seventy four, notes what is said under the subheading benefits in the conclusions. Reference to the substantial benefits being to ensure the delivery of the timescale of the master plan is maintained in order to achieve the aspirations and timelines and to meet the HIF funding deadline. In other words, Mr. Justice Lane said constructing the bridge now would keep the aspirations for the Coward Garden Town alive. And paragraph seventy six said, in this light, the reference to achieving well planned development needs to be read. The inconsistency in approach, which Mr. Glenister says was being recommended, was in truth not inconsistency at all. And there's thus no irrationality in the report. And then he goes on at seventy nine to look at the second related benefit, which relates to the need for possession and the limited periods with network rail where that may be possible. And concludes at the end of seventy nine, it went to the benefit of keeping the master plan on track in that should phase one be approved, construction wouldn't be a delaying factor. In summary, the report's articulation of the benefits of the construction of the bridge went no further than was appropriate in the light of the status of the master plan and the JCS in the currently emerging process. Towards the end, the committee was not being encouraged to cherry pick or adopt an asymmetrical approach to the benefits and harms involved in the construction. The fact the bridge has a connection with possible future development did not mean the application to build the bridge required consideration of the harms that might arise from that future development worried ever to take place, even assuming any proper identification and analysis could be made of them at this stage. And then goes on to consider a second limb that was advanced by Mr. Glenister below, which was that leaving aside the question of irrationality, the question whether the future effects was a potentially material consideration. The argument advanced was that it was certainly a potentially material consideration, but that members were told categorically that they were not, that they were not allowed to take this into account, it wasn't material, it could not be taken into account. And the argument that was advanced below was that that was wrong as a matter of law, that nobody was suggesting that if members had wanted to have regard to that, they could not have done so. And therefore directing them that they were barred from looking at it was a clear error of law in the advice that they were given. That argument is then considered next by Mr. Justice Lane. It starts at paragraph eighty one. And if I take, my lady, to paragraphs eighty three and eighty four, it may remove the need for me to come back to this when we look at authorities later. There's a quotation from Sam Smith, the decision of the Supreme Court, in particular, the judgment of Lord Carnworth, where references made to the distinction in essence between mandatory relevant considerations and permissible relevant considerations. And the point being made that if you are in the territory of things which an authority is permitted to take into account, but which are not mandatory, then the judge, the question whether failure to take those into account is unlawful is in essence a matter of the discretion of the decision maker susceptible to challenge only on grounds of Wensbury unreasonableness or.
Which is that the decision maker is the council, not the planning officer?
Oh, indeed, indeed.
So if the planning officer says to the council, you can't take this into account, and they don't because they think they can't, then we're not into Sam Smith's territory at all?
Well, my lady, that's precisely my, the point I've come to. That might have dealt with my, the second limb of my submission very briefly on this. Obviously, your ladyship will have to make of it what you will, but that is in essence the submission I'm about to make under that regard. But I'm getting slightly ahead of myself because I've gone through the totality of the reasons.
Yes, I want to go back to.
I need to step back to stage one, if I can. And as to the first point on rationality, my lady, in my submission, Mr. Justice Lane was respectfully clearly wrong in concluding that the benefit relied on, related simply to questions of the deliverability, the timing and the ability to secure funding, and had no regard whatsoever for the prize at the end of the day, which that would deliver.
I query how far that actually is a planning consideration anyway, the timing of funding?
Well, can I, can I come, that's a point that I, I mean, to the extent that it is relevant, I want to, I've got submissions to make about.
The committee were told that it wasn't relevant, wasn't a material consideration.
Well, but, well, yeah.
We're pushing you ahead anyway.
Can I, yeah, I'll happily pick that point up if I may, when I, in due course. But starting firstly with, with, is it actually what members were advised? In my submission, it is, it's quite clear from the references to which I've taken the court that the officer's report explicitly considered not just the question of timing, but also the benefit of the future development itself. And at the risk of going back over paragraphs I've taken the court to, can I briefly just touch on, without reading the whole of them again, one or two key points? Firstly, if one goes back in the officer's report to page one hundred and twenty nine of the supplementary bundle, in, in the summary of what it is that the master plan would provide, there is a clear reference there to what phase one would bring forward, the number of homes, the employment land. That's all spelt out and is therefore presumably in some way considered to be relevant to the decision that is to be made. Page one hundred and thirty, at the bottom of the page, there's the quotation from the NPPF about the supply of large numbers of new homes being best achieved through planning for larger scale development and the need to support that by necessary infrastructure and facilities. Now, paragraph, the relevant part of the NPPF is clearly talking about the delivery of large new homes. Again, if that's not relevant to the determination, one queries why it's raised at this stage. At one three one, there is a reference there to phase one at the top of the page. Infrastructure can be key to unlocking the land. In the case of the current application, the construction of the bridge is there to deliver the first phase of the TADC M. Well, your ladyship has seen what the first phase of the TADC M is because that is the part that was set out at page one hundred and twenty nine, the reference there to the three one eight oh homes, the forty six new hectares. So when it talks about delivering the first phase of the TADC M, it's talking about the whole of that and that's why the date two thousand and thirty one is there, to ensure the proposed development is facilitated and supported by the necessary infrastructure. Similarly, in the the third paragraph, the principle of progressing its substantial benefits, seeking to achieve the aspirations and timelines of the TADC M and ensuring the necessary infrastructure is in place to achieve well planned development. There's an and in the middle there, which in my submission is important. The latter part may relate to timing, the former relates to the delivery of the TADC M. And that is, includes the whole of phase one. And just to check. Yes, and then if one goes to page one four seven, at the top of the page, there would be public benefits arising from the proposal, which is the first phase of the garden communities programme, which would deliver housing and associated infrastructure. Clear and convincing justification for the proposed bridge to facilitate the garden communities programme. In my submission, my lady, when one looks at the word garden communities programme, one's not talking about it simply in terms of an agenda or timeline. It is a programme which would deliver housing and associated infrastructure. It says so in terms. And similarly, at page one hundred and forty eight, in the summary of the benefits, significant benefits in enabling the delivery of the TADC M, ensuring the necessary infrastructure is in place. The application site itself spans across land parcels fourteen and fifteen, which are identified to have an indicative capacity of two thousand and fifty five homes, which would make a significant contribution to housing land supply. The HIF funding financial model obligation is for the delivery of eight hundred and twenty six new homes. There are substantial benefits with progressing the application proposals at the current time. Why, I ask, is it that it's necessary to refer to the quantity of homes that would be brought forward if those are not part of the benefits which members are being asked to take into account? And so I say, simply as a matter of construction of the officer's report and without in any sense taking a strained reading. And I, the court would be very familiar with the authorities which say that in an officer's report, it's not to be subjected to a, it's not a statutory construction point, it's not an examination. But if one looked at that and asked, what's the fair meaning? What is the message that comes across? In my submission, the natural meaning is there's a lot of housing that's riding on the back of this. And that's what should be taken into account. And indeed, the flip side to that, and it picks up on the question your ladyship asked me, is that, and indeed, my lord asked, is that any other conclusion would be? is that, and indeed, my lord asked, is that any other conclusion would be extraordinary? Because as far as funding is concerned, we know that if you look only at the bridge, if you strip it away from the wider garden village, the bridge on its own is harmful. And in my submission, it makes absolutely no sense to say that that harm is outweighed by the benefit of the fact that somebody is prepared to put up eight million pounds of public money in order to build it. It's not a public benefit to spend money constructing something that is harmful.
Well, it's not, yes, whether it's harmful or not, it's not particularly beneficial in planning terms to build a construction which serves no useful purpose in the middle of a field and to spend lots of public money on that.
I'm grateful, my lady, and the same is true of timeline. Because if the, and we've been told, it's not my submission, the bridge is harmful, that's the officer's own conclusion. It is not a benefit to accelerate the time at which that harm is experienced so that it's, you know, it happens earlier rather than later. The acceleration of the timeline is only a public benefit in conjunction with the ability to bring forward housing and employment development. It is, it is simply not possible in my submission, at least not in a rational way, to divorce the two.
Can I ask this? When I was reading this report yesterday, it struck me that there might be two stages at which the officer was considering the matters that you've identified. First, starting on page one hundred and thirty, under the heading phasing of application, which seems to be a bit about, is this the right time to consider this application? And at that point, understandably, the prospect that the development which it is supposed to enable might be lost or delayed in some harmful way is treated as a material fact. And the conclusion is essentially that progressing the application at the moment, it is, on balance, it's a good thing. But then there's a separate question, whether, having decided that you're going to decide it, whether the benefits of the development itself come down in favour of, or outweigh any harms. Those seem to be two separate questions. Because you might say, well, we shouldn't be deciding this now. There's no good reason to decide it now. And there wouldn't have been, on the face of it, but for the funding issue. And possibly that the track-related, rail-related... Leaving, if one left those two on one side, there wouldn't have been a good reason to progress it independently of the rest of the package. So it simply struck me that the reasoning seems to be the same in both respects. In other words, by the time that the officer's decided that it's a good idea to decide the thing, he's also reached a conclusion, he's going to recommend that it go ahead as well. Is that, is that a confused analysis?
It may not be. I'm not entirely sure I follow it entirely completely, my lord, but I, it... Even the decision to accelerate...
One can see how it would be a material factor, that the funding to do this thing wouldn't be available beyond a certain answer. Therefore, you consider, consider it now.
Yes.
Because it's a critical point at which to consider it. Separately, is it a good thing to happen?
Yes, indeed.
In the long term? It's a different question.
The reason for considering it now relates to timing. The question, is there a public bene, what is the public benefit which justifies it? Is a different question, indeed. I respectfully agree with that. I'd say, my lord, for those reasons, I stand by the submission which was made to Mr. Justice Lane, but which he rejected, that there is, I say, an outright inconsistency in the approach taken in the officer's report in terms of being advised, you can't take into account the harms, but you can take into account benefits. That then brings me, although I, if one looks at the way in which Lord Justice, Mr. Justice Lane approached it, he took the rationality point first because, as I read his judgment, he clearly appreciated that if I succeeded on that, then the question about whether it was a mandatory or permissible consideration was neither here nor there. And in that sense, the submission about Sam Smith is an adjunct. I only need it if I fail to get home on the rationality ground. But I do say that there is a mistake in relation to Sam Smith reasoning. And I appreciate your ladyship will need to go away and think about the questions she asked me, but with respect, that is exactly the point that I make about it. The court's seen Sam Smith, you'll be familiar with the distinction. It goes back to the decision of the New Zealand Court of Appeal in credence about some considerations being mandatory, you have to take them...
You're not, you're not suggesting that we're in mandatory consideration territory?
No, 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 no.
You're saying it's a question of, it's a question for the decision maker to decide what is a material consideration, see Sam Smith. But here, the decision maker is the local authority. The local authority is being advised by the planning officer, but the planning officer is effectively fettering that discretion by saying, you can't take this into account. That's your point.
That's it in a nutshell. And on that, I'm very happy to leave the submission there on the basis you clearly understand it. And I don't need to say more about it at this stage. I know Mr. Pereira may have something to come back on, I may comment on that in due course. But I'm happy to advance the point further. But if you're content for me to leave it there, that's... Yeah, I'm very grateful, thank you. Well, my lady, that's extremely helpful. It allows me then really to go straight to my ground three, which is the EIA point. And the consideration of what was the project. And in this regard, it's, I think, probably easiest to start with the legal principles and then look to the way in which they were applied in the particular case. And so if I could ask the court to take up the authorities' bundle, and if we can start, I'm going, my lady, to take you to the regulations rather than the directive. You've got the directive on which the regulations were based at tab one. But for my purposes, I'm more than happy to proceed on the basis that the regulations have correctly transposed the directive other than for the purposes of wider context. I don't need to go back to the directive itself. And so at tab two, you have the Environmental Impact Assessment Regulations. And if we could start these, Regulation Three, which is at page thirty-one of the bundle. Regulation Three, helpfully short, the relevant planning authority must not grant planning permission or subsequent consent for EIA development unless an EIA has been carried out in respect of that development. So if it is EIA development, you cannot grant consent without carrying out environmental impact assessment. So the question then is, what is EIA development? And the answer to that is found in Regulation Two. In particular, if you turn back to page twenty-six, just about a quarter of the way down, third of the way down, page twenty-six, there's a definition of an EIA application. Then EIA development means development which is either Schedule One development or Schedule Two development likely to have significant effects on the environment by virtue of factors such as its nature, size or location. So in other words, there's a distinction drawn there. Some things are always EIA development. And for example, nuclear power stations would be in that category. We are here dealing with Schedule Two development, where, we'll look at the schedule in a moment, but it needs to be in Schedule Two, but it also needs to be likely to have significant effects on the environment. And Schedule Two development is also defined in Regulation Two. It's at page twenty-eight, just above halfway down the page. Schedule Two development means development, other than exempt development, of a description in column one of the table in Schedule Two, where we can ignore any part is to be carried out in a sensitive area or any applicable threshold or criteria in the corresponding part of column two of that table is respectively exceeded or met in relation to that development. And Schedule Two is at page thirty-nine. At least it starts, it starts rather earlier than page thirty-nine. But page thirty-nine is where we have the two relevant parts. And in the right-hand column at ten B, you'll see urban development projects, including shopping centres, car parks, sports, leisure centres, multiplex cinemas. And also at F, not sidelined, but perhaps it should be, the construction of roads unless included in Schedule One. And those each have their own thresholds set alongside them. And so those are the definitions of Schedule Two. And then in terms of the regulations, I think the last thing I need to take the court to is to go back to Regulation Five, which relates to the process of deciding, or how do you go about deciding whether or not this is EIA development? Regulation Five, page thirty-four, the general provisions as to screening. Five-one, subject to paragraph three, regulation sixty-three, the occurrence of an event in paragraph two shall determine that development is EIA development. Regulation Two, the first is, if an applicant actually submits an environmental statement, then it's automatically assumed that it's EIA development. That's not this case. But two B, the adoption by the relevant planning authority of a screening opinion to the effect that development is EIA. And then five-four, where a relevant planning authority has to decide whether Schedule Two development is EIA development, the authority must take into account in that decision information provided by the applicant and results of any relevant EU environmental assessment. And then the selection criteria set out in Schedule Three. Five-five, where a relevant planning authority adopts a screening opinion, it must, amongst other things, A, state the main reasons for their conclusion with reference to the criteria listed in Schedule Three. My lady, I don't for present purposes need to take you to Schedule Three itself, but the requirement there to carry out screening and to issue reasons for the conclusion one way or another. In terms of the workings of the regulations, in our skeleton argument, at page, oh, it's paragraph sixty-seven, which is page thirty-two of the court bundle, we have referred to the decision of Mr. Justice Simon Brown, as he then was in the Swale case. My lady, I'm happy to turn it up in the authorities' bundle, but as I understand it, the only paragraph that's considered relevant from Swale is the one that's been quoted, and it's not in dispute. So for present purposes, I take it from my skeleton. The question whether development is of a category described in either schedule must be answered strictly in relation to the development applied for, not any development contemplated beyond that. But the further question arising in respect of Schedule Two, whether it's likely to have significant effects on the environment, must be answered differently. The proposal should not then be considered in isolation if in reality it's properly to be regarded as an integral part of an inevitably more substantial development. This approach appears to me to be appropriate on the language of the regulations, the existence of the smaller development of itself promoting the larger development, and therefore likely to carry in its wake the environmental effects of the latter. In common sense, moreover, developers could otherwise defeat the object of the regulations by piecemeal development proposals. So if one goes back to Schedule Two, you've got to be of a description in the right-hand column. That's a matter where you only look at the application. So we're only looking at the application for the bridge itself. But in asking the second limb of the Schedule Two test, is it likely to have significant environmental effects? And one has to ask, well, what is, what is the project? Is it part of a wider project which would have those effects? And your ladyship will have noted there at the end of that quotation, the reference to the need to ensure that developers don't defeat the object of the regulations. And in that regard, you'll have seen from both our skeleton argument and Mr. Pereira's that there's now quite a significant body of case law on what is generally referred to as salami slicing. And at the heart of that is the idea that, as Mr. Justice Simon Brown's indicated, a developer shouldn't be able to defeat the EIA regime by taking what is in reality a single project and dividing it into a series of smaller parts, each one of which on its own is below the thresholds or wouldn't have significant effects. And so in our skeleton argument, we referred in paragraphs seventy-four and seventy-five to the European case law on that, the decisions in Commission and Spain and Ecologistas. Again, my lady, both of those are in the bundle. But beyond the quotations set out in our skeleton, I don't believe we need to go. And again, I don't believe that the principle that's set out in those is important, that it's necessary to look at projects jointly where they are connected, where they follow on one from another. I take those wordings from the quotation, paragraph seventy-five, and the observations of the court agreeing with that.
So in short, the question is, is the, is the bridge looked at on itself within Schedule Two? If it is, you look at it as part of the overall Garden City project?
Indeed. Well, that's my submission, yes. On it, you look at it on its own to say, is it in the right-hand column? And there's no dispute that it is in the right-hand column. In this case, everyone accepts it's Schedule Two development in that sense. But is it EIA development? You have to go from it being Schedule Two. You then have to ask the question, is it likely to have significant environmental effects?
Everybody accepts that it is. Why?
But it's, but it's...
Schedule Two development? Because you showed us the columns, and the columns are talking about urban structures and so forth.
Well, F was talking about the roads, the roads as well. And the threshold for that is only one hectare. The overall application site in this case is rather wider than the one hectare. That's, Mr. Pereira will be able to correct me if I'm wrong, but my...
I must admit I raised a slight eyebrow when I looked at it because I thought it doesn't fall within B. If it falls within anything, it's got to fall within A.
Yeah, it's, it's an urban development, and this might sound odd when one says the words, but it's, it's an urban development project under ten B, which is kind of urban-type development rather than development within an urban location.
The overall section is infrastructure projects. Does that have any significance on the way that we understand urban development?
Well, well, yes, but there's no, there's no dispute between us...
So it's definitely Schedule Two development. The question is, what do you, what do you make of that?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, I'm grateful.
Yes, and in deciding whether there are likely to be significant effects, do you just look at the bridge or do you look at the wider project? And that's, this is where the salami slicing cases become important. I've referred briefly to the European case law, but it is, as I've indicated, well reflected in domestic jurisprudence as well. Of the cases in the bundle, there are just two that I would take court to at the moment because I think otherwise it's going to be unnecessary duplication. I know in due course, Mr. Pereira may want to refer to, to others. My lady, the two that I would take you to are, first of all, Larkfleet, which is at tab fifteen of the bundle. And you'll see from the head note, it related to the construction of a link road. The argument before the court was that the environmental statement accompanying the application was flawed because it failed to make an adequate assessment of a proposed urban extension, either jointly or cumulatively with the link road, in accordance with the EIA regulations. The submission made that they were functionally independent. The link road was an integral part. And so the environmental statement should have considered the impact of it jointly and not as a single project. At first instance, the claim was dismissed on the basis that the council had been entitled to conclude that the link road was not an integral part, such that they should be considered jointly. Since they concluded it was a single development, the extent of the cumulative assessment was a matter of fact and judgment for L as decision maker. The judgment courts given by Lord Justice Sales, at page four-three-eight, he notes paragraph three, that in that case, there'd been a longstanding policy objective to build a bypass to the south of Grantham to alleviate congestion, but that funding hadn't been available. That's important on the facts. Longstanding objective to build a bypass to alleviate congestion. And then at four, subsequent to the adoption of that policy to build the bypass, a local plan framework which identifies an area for residential development. And one of the sites identified is that the southern quadrant, we're told at section five. And then over the page, the relevant policy in the core strategy... And then over the page, the relevant policy in the core strategy in relation to the southern quadrant states that access to the site would be dependent upon the provision of a new road. That's because the highway system in Grantham would be overloaded if the development of the residential site proceeded with the only access to it being from Grantham itself. Paragraph fourteen, the sidelined passage at page four-four-zero, pursuant to the requirements of the Directive and the Town and Country Planning Regulations, the environmental statement treated the link road as a relevant project, using the language of the Directive or development, but recognised that it might have cumulative environmental effects in combination with the development of the residential site. The cumulative effects were addressed in chapter fourteen of the ES and also by way of assumptions made elsewhere in the statement regarding the likely traffic flows. It's an important point there, my lady. First of all, the residential development isn't treated as part of the project for deciding whether EIA is required. In other words, it doesn't come in at the screening stage, do you need EIA? But it comes in at what is often referred to as the scoping stages, well, what do you have to put in the environmental statement? And it is of some significance that, having concluded that it wasn't part of the project, but that it was nevertheless a matter where there should be some assessment of it under the cumulative effects heading in the environmental statement, and indeed in this case that that was done. And then if one goes to the discussion of the issues, they start at page four-four-three, paragraph thirty-five, where Lord Justice Sales refers to Ecologistas. Paragraph thirty-six, he sets out the submission made by Mr. Kingston on the basis of that, but says that the argument's unsustainable. It's clear from the terms of the Directive that just because two sets of proposed works may have a cumulative effect, that doesn't make them a single project for the purposes of the Directive, contemplates they might constitute two potential projects, but with cumulative effects which need to be assessed. And then thirty-seven, in the sidelined passage, it's true that scrutiny of cumulative effects between two projects may involve less information than if the two sets of works are treated together as one project. The planning authority should be astute to ensure that a developer hasn't sliced up what is in reality one project in order to try to make it easier to obtain planning permission for the first part of the project and thereby gain a foot in the door in relation to the remainder. But the EIA Directive, the jurisprudence of the Court of Justice recognises legitimate for different proposals to be brought forward at different times, even though they may have a degree of interaction, if they are different projects. And in my view, that is what has happened here as regards the application for permission to build the link road and the later application site. And the reasoning for that, my lady, you can pick up in part from the later parts of the judgment, and in particular, one goes to paragraph forty, where there's a reference to a valutative judgment is required, question whether it's a proper legal approach to say the primary decision-maker, to make that judgment, is the relevant planning authority, subject to rationality. In relation closely, to the closely related question whether a project is likely to have significant effects on the environment, there's authority that the same approach is correct. As regards the valutative judgment, whether a particular set of works constitutes one distinct project or part of another wider project, there's a strong argument that likewise the former approach is correct. So therefore, they're setting out the approach that should be taken, and I recognise that it's one of four, primarily for the local authority, but it has to direct itself properly in law and is subject, of course, to review on Wensbury grounds. And then in terms of the facts, paragraph forty-four, Lord Justice Sales comments that it's ultimately unnecessary to decide precisely what the standard of review for the Court would be, since both lead to the conclusion that the appeal on this ground should be dismissed. I'm the view that the link road is a project for EIA purposes which is distinct, that accords with the assessment made by the Council. In this case, therefore, the position is the same in this Court as it was in Bowen West, in which Law Justice Law's decided with agreement of the other members that relevant works constitute a self-contained product. And I would so conclude whether the issue is one of law or one of judgment for the Secretary of State, and in the latter case, whatever is the appropriate standard. Paragraph forty-six, if we can go there, the features which underpin that set out, four lines down, the most important feature is there's a strong planning imperative for the construction of the link road, of the bypass, which has nothing to do with the development of the residential site. It's clear from the evidence, the residential site couldn't be granted permission unless the link road is constructed, but the converse is not true. There is a strong, independent planning need for the construction of the link road, whether or not the residential site is developed. In the context of this planning rationale, it makes obvious sense to regard the main function of the link road as being to form part of the Grantham bypass, and hence to regard the relevant project as the construction of a road, since the main functional purpose of the link road as part of the bypass is to provide a new passage for traffic to avoid Grantham. This approach to identification is supported by the references to roads and other transportation projects. And so that's the reason in the end for agreeing in that case, that there was an independent justification for the road in that case. And then if I could just briefly draw the Court's attention to paragraphs fifty-four and fifty-five, which deal with what the environmental statement did do in that case. And it's the point that I made earlier about there being actually some description of the effects of the urban, of the urban development in the plan. Environmental statement dealt with cumulative effects by including increased figures for traffic movements to reflect the numbers of people who would live there. In the environmental statement, LCC supplied as much information as it reasonably could about the cumulative effects, taking account the degree of uncertainty which existed about the precise details of the development of the residential site. Uncertainty in relation to a later proposed project affects what cumulative effects can be said to be likely at the time. The applications being considered, the greater the uncertainty, the less precise the details which can be given about the likely cumulative impacts. In our case, the master plan did not specify exactly where particular buildings would go, left a large margin of uncertainty regarding their roof heights and so forth. On the other hand, it did give a reasonably good idea of where green areas will be left to minimise the environmental impacts. So in that case, some uncertainty in terms of what the master plan will bring forward, but nonetheless, nonetheless, the environmental statement managed to grapple with that, even if the information that it provided was necessarily slightly less specific. I said, my lady, there were two authorities, that's the first. The second is the decision in Wingfield, which is at tab nineteen, and I go there largely because it's a convenient summary of the recent case law and some general criteria or principles derived from it.
At least one of us is fairly familiar.
Indeed. So the facts the Court will see from the headnotes are challenged to the grant of planning permission for development of three hundred and seventy dwellings on a colliery site, and there's an adjacent site, the Hoplins site, which was also being brought forward. And the ground of challenge, or the first ground of challenge, was that the Council erred in failing to treat the two as a single project for purposes of the EIA regulations. And that argument was rejected by Mr. Justice Lang, and the case law is set out, or the summary of the case law begins at page five hundred and twenty-eight, paragraph fifty. I might briefly, I've not gone into Burridge itself, but you'll see a brief quotation from Burridge at paragraph fifty-four, page five-two-nine, the test that was applied there, were they functionally interdependent? Could they only be regarded as an integral part of the same development? References also to Larkfleet at paragraph fifty-seven, Bowen, and other cases set out through to paragraph sixty-two. The conclusions at paragraph sixty-three, the question as to what constitutes the project for the purposes of the EIA regulations is a matter of judgment for the competent authorities, subject to challenge on grounds of Wensbury rationality or other public law error. Relevant factors may include common ownership, whether owned or promoted by the same person may constitute a single project, simultaneous determinations, functional interdependence, where one part of a defendant could not function without the other, this may indicate they constitute a single project, standalone projects where a development's justified on its own merits and would be pursued independently of another development. This may indicate that it constitutes a single individual project that is not an integral part of a more substantial scheme. And the judgment then goes on to apply those criteria. So paragraph sixty-six, in that case, the interested party not interested in the alternative site, no connection between the owners. Sixty-eight, no functional independence between the two schemes. Paragraph sixty-nine, most important factor that they were clearly standalone projects, each of which could be justified on it. That's the reason for the decision in that particular case.
I know you didn't refer to the Court of Appeal decision, but I mean, all we did was uphold that on the basis that there wasn't any error of law in Mrs. Justice Lang's approach.
Indeed, and it's for the finer grain in the judgment that I think, I'm grateful for that. So that's, as far as I propose to go at the moment on the authorities on salami slicing, my lady, there's just one other principle that I refer to briefly at the moment, and again, I hope it's not necessary to go into the authorities' bundle to do it. It's the point we make in our skeleton argument at paragraph seventy-six, the general principle that consideration of the effects of development needs to be given at the earliest possible stage. We've referred there to the decision in Champion, there are a number of other authorities which make the same point. It doesn't mean that there cannot be EIA at a later stage, but wherever possible, EIA should be carried out at the earliest stage. I turn then to how those principles were applied in this case, and in terms of the argument that was advanced to Mr. Justice Lang. Court's already seen that the bridge was treated as, was common ground that it was Schedule Two development, therefore there was a requirement to conduct a screening assessment in relation to compliance with Regulation Five. And one of the questions to be considered as part of that assessment was whether the project would have a significant effect on the environment. If it did, then it would be EIA development and an EIA was required. If it didn't, then no environmental statement would be sought. And the question therefore arose, well, what was the project for the purposes of deciding whether there were likely to be significant environmental effects? In our skeleton argument here, we've referred to the fact that when the matter first was brought to the attention, the question was first raised with the Council's development manager, Mr. Skelton, he took the view that the project was EIA development on the basis that it was part of the future development. That's paragraph nineteen of our skeleton argument. I just remind myself of the precise words used. Yes, my gut feeling is that it probably is, given that it can't be divorced from the future development it's intended to serve. The Court has that email at page two-six-two, but if I were to ask you to turn it up, you would see no more than I've already indicated. And so it was on that basis that, well, as your lordship sees, relationships from the quotation, the applicant was asked to submit an environmental impact screening opinion to establish, to inform the Council to make a decision on screening. And that screening report is in the supplementary bundle at pay, at tab, tab two. Sorry, do I mean tab two? Yes, I do mean, sorry, let me just get my pages right. Sorry, it's page two, not tab two, of the supplementary bundle, right at the very beginning. So this is a report submitted by the applicant in order to inform the Council's decision on whether there were likely to be significant effects. And paragraph one-one, the Court will see the overview of the scheme. The application in the second paragraph is being sought only to construct the bridge and leave it in place until the development comes forward to make it operational. It's essentially enabling works for future development of sites. In the document, the area to the north is designated as Phase One, referred to as the North Ashchurch Development Area. In accordance with this approach, the bridge will not be connected to the public highway as part of the ABR scheme, will not be provided with final road surfacing after construction, will remain fenced off until future development linked to the master plan. And then consequently, the operational stage for the purposes of the ABR scheme is restricted to the physical presence of the bridge as a feature within the landscape, as an operational highway, or use as an operational highway will be a matter for future planning application. And one sees that that approach is taken throughout the whole of the report. Page sixteen, paragraph two-point-two, there's a reference again to the scheme, a reference to the fact that the development area is anticipated to provide eight hundred and twenty-six houses, wouldn't occur unless further crossings. But then we're told again, the ABR scheme relates exclusively to the bridge. Future development will be taken up, which will include the routing of a new highway to incorporate the use of the bridge structure. So the future use there spelt out. But in terms of the assessment that will be carried out, what is looked at is the bridge alone. If one turns to two-point-four, cumulative projects, the ABR scheme constitutes just the construction of the rail bridge being left unpaved. Current location of the future road through the area is unknown, except for the point at which it will cross the railway. Notwithstanding this, traffic modelling has considered a potential alignment when considering the need for cumulative noise and air quality assessments. Figure two-three has been used as a probable alignment of the scheme in the absence of further information to the contrary. And if one then goes through the various headings, I won't take the Court to all of them, but if we do it in the order in which they occur, biodiversity starts at section four, page twenty-nine, and the Court will see from the summary at the very end of that, four-point-two-point-three at page thirty-three, again, the point repeated, the scheme is just to construct and leave in place the ABR. At this stage of ABR scheme development, there are no operational effects to assess in terms of biodiversity. Landscape is the following section, section five, and there's a conclusion in five-six, the summary of the overall effects. I would invite the Court to read five-one through to five-six, but the point is that if one were to read it, you wouldn't find any description or analysis of anything other than the structure of the bridge. I'd be asking you to read it to note the absence of something. I'm sure if I'm wrong in that, Mr. Pereira will be able to draw the Court's attention to it. But there is a conclusion nonetheless of five-six, that the bridge on its own will have an adverse or negligible effect, albeit significant. Air quality is approached on the same basis, page forty-five, six-point-two-three, the conclusion reached, no traffic data available for connection to the highway network, so it's not possible to assess the potential for cumulative effects. Noise and vibration is dealt with in the same way. And in terms of heritage, the heritage section, sorry, I'm just going to skip over, I think, one reference, sixty-three. Heritage is in section eight. And at the bottom of page sixty, scope of assessment, it's the same sentence again, the scheme is to construct and leave in place, doesn't include the future highway, nor the associated eight hundred and twenty-six, as they're currently not defined, not possible to assess the cumulative effect, therefore not possible to assess the likely cumulative impacts of this part of the application. So the assessment done simply on the basis of the bridge itself. And the same broadly is true of all the particular chapters. In our skeleton argument, we've set out in paragraph twenty-four the particular references, but I needn't trouble the Court with them. You will find the same thing for each of the headings, either in terms of the exact words used or in terms of the scope of the assessment that is carried out at all times. It's done on the basis of the bridge in isolation. And then one comes to the conclusions at page seventy-one, which records that the scheme does have potential impact. The second paragraph, no intention to connect to the highway at this stage. considerations based on the structure being present and visible, however not being available for human reuse, not requiring maintenance. Noted that it's essentially advance works for anticipated growth, providing a crossing point. However, the planning policy context not yet fixed. Consequently, the preparation of a robust assessment of cumulative effects in the light of a future baseline scenario is not possible. Any attempt to prepare such document would arguably be premature. The developments would fall out with the usual definition of a reasonably foreseeable future project on the basis of the lack of formal planning status. And the conclusions, whilst the third paragraph of conclusions, whilst the context as advance works within Ashchurch, the specific sites the bridge would connect to do not currently have formal planning status, the potential for cumulative impacts between the ABR scheme and any future development may reasonably come forward as a consequence or it cannot therefore be robustly assessed at this time. The potential for significant cumulative effects to arise cannot therefore be considered as logical reasoning to conclude that the ABR is EIA development. I ask the court to note there that the reference there is taken to cumulative effects in terms of whether or not this is EIA development. Cumulative effects in practice is a scoping issue rather than a screening issue. But I... The present purpose is that the point probably makes little difference. So the reasons that are given, to the extent that reasons are there for not concluding that the scheme is more than the bridge are, as the court seen, the references at the end to the lack of definition of the wider project and the difficulty of doing something. And also, possibly right at the beginning for the introduction, the fact that the application itself is simply for the bridge. To the extent that the report explains why it's not looking wider, that is as far, at least as I have been able to determine, it goes. That's simply the report that went to the council. It was considered by the council and was adopted by them in the screening opinion, which you have at page one-zero-three of the bundle. And this is, in essence, the council's decision on the point. One-zero-three, and it says it's the adopted screening opinion. It concludes that it is that an environmental statement is not required. It says, "The local authorities take into account the size and nature of the proposed development, the location, likely impact of the proposal, the character and appearance of the area, potential increase in traffic, potential effects on biodiversity, heritage assets, trees..." Well, Lady, you can only have done that to the extent that those things are set out in the screening report. Further details and reasons for this decision are set out in the attached report. That attached report is, in essence, the table which one has in the following pages in landscape form, which set out a number of questions that have been asked and the answers to them. If one were to go through the answers to them, it is apparent that each of those answers is given simply by reference to the bridge itself. So in asking whether there are significant or likely significant effects, the questions are all answered simply on the basis of the bridge structure. There's no description or discussion of any wider development. And so in essence, what the screening opinion does is adopt and agree with the conclusions of the screening report. And in terms of the reasons for that, some light is shed on that in the witness statement of Mr. Skelton, which the court has in the bundle at page two-five-six. Mr. Skelton tells us that he was the development manager responsible for overseeing, including the issue of EIA screening opinions. At paragraph six, he refers to his indication earlier in the email that the development might be EIA development. He says that was an initial without prejudice view. I don't question that. Paragraph seven, an EIA screening opinion request was made by Atkins, and that refers to the report that I've just taken the court to. Quest was allocated to a contract planner, Mr. White. That's when Mr. White's involvement began. Mr. White recommended the submission of the environmental statement, it wasn't required. I recall discussing the issue with Adam White in my role as development manager. On reflection and in the light of the information submitted in the screening report, I agreed with the recommendation which Mr. White made. Particularly, I agreed that any future contemplated development could not be assessed at the time of the screening decision for the reasons Mr. White stated in the screening matrix accompanying the screening opinion. The screening opinion was then formally issued on the twenty-second of June, two thousand and twenty. So that is where we get to in terms of what actually happened in this case. And that, I hope, enables me to make my submissions quite succinctly. In front of Mr. Justice Lane, Mr. Glenister argued that in concluding that this was not EIA development, the council erred because nowhere in any of the documentation that I've taken the court through, the screening report or the screening opinion or indeed the witness statement of Mr. Skelton, is there any reference whatsoever to the question of what constitutes the project or indeed to the tests which have been set out by the court, sometimes in slightly different words, but at different times in the case law? And so, for example, nowhere in any of the reasoning that we have seen, is there any discussion of whether the bridge was an integral part of an inevitably more substantial development? And that was the test that was set out in the Swale case, integral part of an inevitably more substantial development. Unlike Larkfleet, where Lord Justice Sales found that there was a strong planning imperative for the bypass, which had nothing to do with the residential scheme, there is no consideration in this case of whether there was any reason for the bridge to exist other than as part of the wider garden village. Nowhere in any of the reasoning is there any discussion of the kind of criteria which are listed in Wingfield. And as to the argument that had been advanced about the wider extent of the scheme being uncertain, Mr. Glenister referred the court to the decision of Mr. Justice Sullivan, as he then was in the second of the two Rochdale cases, which the court has at tab five of the bundle. And I'll let you turn that up at this stage if you would. Tab five of the authorities' bundle. As I say, this was the second of two cases involving the grant of outline permission and the extent to which the environmental assessment process adequately assessed. In the first of the Rochdale cases, there had been an environmental assessment, but the permission that was granted didn't attach any sort of conditions which made sure that the development that came forward would actually remain within the limits of what had been assessed in the environmental statement. In this case, Rochdale two, there had been parameters set in the application and the environmental statement had assessed the scheme on the basis that the parameters were a worst case. And then conditions were imposed which would, in essence, make sure that the parameters were adhered to. But the challenge was nevertheless made. And the court will see from the head note, grant of bear outline permission, full permission for spine load, are considered an environmental statement was required. Developer had provided an environmental statement based on an illustrated master plan and indicative schedule of uses for the park. And the permission included conditions as to the submission of further details, one in particular which required preparation of a framework document. And there was a challenge to that on the grounds that there'd been a failure to provide the information required. So this isn't a screening case. This is more, if you like, a scoping case and a case based on the extent to which the permission adheres to the parameters. But nonetheless, there is discussion in it of the argument about the difficulties of carrying out an assessment for something which is still in part an incoherent scheme. And if I can take the court, in particular, to the paragraphs that Mr. Glenister relied on in front of Mr. Justice Lane, page one-five-three, paragraph ninety. "If a particular kind of project is by its very nature not fixed at the outset, but it's expected to evolve over a number of years, there's no reason why a description of the project for the purposes of the directive could not recognise that reality. As important is the environmental assessment process should then take full account at the outset of the implications for the environment of this need for an element of flexibility. The assessment process may well be easier in the case of projects which are fixed in every detail, but the difficulty of assessing projects which do require a degree of flexibility is not a reason for frustrating their implementation. It is for the authority responsible for granting development consent to decide whether the difficulties and uncertainties are such that the proposed degree of flexibility is not acceptable in terms of its potential effect." And then one sees paragraphs ninety-three through to ninety-five, as Justice Sullivan's views, on the way in which environmental assessment could be integrated into the process. My lady, at this stage, I'm not going to read the whole of paragraphs ninety-three through to ninety-five, but you'll note at the end of paragraph ninety-five, "Doesn't give developers an excuse to provide inadequate descriptions of their project. Be it the authority responsible to decide whether it's satisfied, given the nature of the project in question, that it has full knowledge of its likely significant effects on the environment. It considers there was an unnecessary degree of flexibility, hence uncertainty as to the likely significant effects being incorporated into the description, then it can require more detail or refuse consent." And in my submission, that overall approach, that what is required is not absolute certainty. There may well be, need to be, a degree of flexibility. That's entirely consistent with what the court has already seen from what happened in the Larkfleet case, where, again, there was a master plan. It wasn't precise as to what was going to happen, where it was going to go. But nonetheless, the environmental statement was able to deal with that, albeit that it dealt with under the heading of cumulative effects rather than sort of at the screening stage as to determining whether it was a Schedule Two development. So that was the argument advanced. It was rejected by Mr. Justice Lane, and the reasons for that are given by him at paragraph one-one-nine through to one-two-two of his judgment, page eighty-five of the court bundle. "I find the claimants failed to show any public law error. The attempt to invoke the Rochdale envelope principles misconceived. In Rochdale, the planning permission, albeit outline, was for the totality of the relevant development. In the present case, the application was simply for the bridge. As we've already seen, Phase One project is aspirational, despite the best endeavours obligation and its potential role in the emerging process. Although though Phase One, for convenience, can be described as a project, it's very far from being a project for the purposes of the twenty-seventeen regulations. This is not a case where it can properly be said the defendant is seeking to compartmentalise or subdivide elements within the plan in order to evade environmental scrutiny. If and when Phase One is brought forward, the twenty-seventeen regulations will apply. No suggestion, so far as I'm aware, the defendant has any intention of making or permitting piecemeal applications. On the contrary, everything points to there needing to be an environmental assessment of the highway element and likewise of the residential element. In any event, the legal constraints with which the development... the defendant must operate applying, the application would be made for some part of Phase One. The case law I've mentioned would govern the need for an EIA." And there's reference also to government guidance on screening opinions. It makes it plain that there may be occasions where other existing or approved development may be relevant in determining whether significant effects are likely. Thus, if the bridge is constructed, it may be taken into account in determining applications resulting from Phase One of the master plan or indeed any other application that has a relevant relationship. And ground to therefore according to that. My lady, in my respectful submission, the observations and the reasons given in those three brief paragraphs, firstly, miss the point of the submission that was made to Mr. Justice Lane. And to the extent that they provide other reasons for supporting the conclusion, the reasons given are, in my respectful submission, extraneous. As to missing the point, nowhere in those three paragraphs does Mr. Justice Lane grapple with our central complaint that nowhere in this process has anybody asked what is the project. I've already made the point that there is no consideration of the tests applied in any of the case law. That was the submission advanced before Mr. Justice Lane, and with respect to him, he simply doesn't deal with that. There is neither in the documents nor indeed in his judgment, is there a question of why are you providing the bridge? Is there a freestanding reason for it? Can the housing exist without the bridge? Is there functional interdependence between the two? If you provide the bridge, how are you going to get to it? Can you get to it without a road and where is that road likely to be? Those questions are simply not addressed. And for that reason, and particularly in circumstances where this is ultimately a matter of judgment for the planning authority, in my submission, the decision should have been quashed for that reason alone. And it should have been remitted to the council to determine, in accordance with the case law, applying the kind of criteria that are set out in the cases. And I do say that if the council had done that, had it had asked whether the bridge was integral to further development. It's very difficult, in my submission, to see how the council could have concluded anything other than that it was. If one looks at the tests in Swale, at Burridge, however it's put, it is very clear, as I've indicated, that the bridge and at least the road, but in my submission also, at least the first eight-hundred-and-twenty-six homes, are one project. The only reason the bridge is brought forward at this stage is a funding point, which has nothing whatsoever to do with whether ultimately it will be connected to the development. It will be. The development, the need for the garden village is the only reason why anybody is proposing the bridge. And the question, the point that it's proposed at a different point in time is neither here nor there. Similarly, if one looks at the factors that were set out in Wingfield, in this case, the bridge is being promoted by the council. Ultimately, responsibility for bringing forward the garden village through the local plan will be the council. There may be individual landowners, housing developers ultimately, who bring forward the parcel. But the scheme itself, the overall garden village, will have to be brought forward through the local plan process by the council. They are wholly interdependent. The bridge has, as I've indicated, no use except for further development. So in my submission, if the matter... I don't need to go this far, but I do say that if the matter were to go back to the committee and if the committee were to ask those questions, in my submission, the answer is clear. So I come then to the reasons that Mr. Justice Lane did give for rejecting the submission. And if one looks first of all at paragraph one-one-nine, the fact that the application was simply for the bridge. Well, as a matter of fact, of course, that is absolutely true. But that would be true in any salami slicing case. And indeed, that is exactly how salami slicing works. You make an application for something that is much smaller. It's self-evidently not an answer to the point. As to the fact that the rest of Phase One is aspirational, I recognise that there is much detail that still has to be worked out in terms of what would come forward. But I say, I think, four things in response to it. The first is that this is where Rochdale comes in. The fact that something is difficult, doesn't... The fact that it may not be possible to say exactly what will happen is not a reason for not doing the best that one can.
You mean you could do it at a sort of higher level?
You could do it in the same way as was done in the Larkfleet case. And indeed, that's my second point, that this isn't just my submission, it's been done in other cases. And so in this case, for example, we know roughly where... We know there's going to need to be a link road. We know roughly where that road is going to be. We know that there are going to be eight-hundred-and-twenty-six homes that come on the back of it, because that's a condition, albeit a best endeavours one. It's highly likely that that will occur. And it would have been possible to put those things in.
You don't really know quite where those homes are going to be though, do we?
Not precisely, my lady, no. Mr. Pereira might be able to help.
Do you know whether they're to the left or the right of the railway line?
No, we... To be clear, and I'll be making this submission, there is no project or proposal for eight-hundred-and-twenty-six homes.
Yet.
Or any other number. There's a... I won't make my submission.
No. But notwithstanding that, and I'm very happy to proceed on the basis that Mr. Pereira outlines, I don't question it. But we know that in this case, there was a transport assessment, which albeit in a rough and ready way, did manage to produce estimates of the impact of eight-hundred-and-twenty-six dwellings using a bridge and using a link road along an alignment that was likely, if not certain. And therefore, it is at the very least possible to have an assessment at that level. It may not be exact, it may not be precise, but that is the point. It may not be exact, it may not be precise, but that is the point that Rochdale makes. It doesn't have to be. You do what you can. And in particular, the judge has the point, now I keep banging on about it, but in this case, I mean, strip away the three-thousand houses, strip away the eight-hundred-and-twenty-six houses. You have a bridge, it's going to have to be connected to the local highway network. In terms of how that is going to happen, the options available are limited. At the very least, if it's the only other thing that was taken into account, it ought to have been possible to factor in some consideration of the fact that there's going to be a road which is going to go past the front, two Grade Two listed buildings, which are already being adversely affected by a bridge, and where the road is going to be a great deal closer, and where it's going to cut across the kind of landscape and the medieval settlement patterns, which are discussed in the Heritage Report. It would have been possible to come to a view at some level about those sorts of impacts. And so, I say, the fact that it might be difficult to be precise is not a reason for doing nothing. As far as paragraph one-hundred-and-twenty is concerned, and the fact that there will be an environmental assessment of Phase One at the later stage, in my submission, there are a number of problems with that. The first is that it's not a test that, in my submission, you find in any of the case law, and that is not surprising, because it's not consistent with the general approach that one sees, for example, in Champion, that where possible, EIA should happen at the earliest opportunity. And indeed, taken to an extreme, it would drive a coach and horses through that principle. It is important.
Drive a coach and horses, sorry to interrupt you, but it would drive a coach and horses through salami slicing as well. Because it could always be said, well, we're just looking at Project A, and you can always look at the environmental impacts of Project B when Project B is applied for.
Indeed. And, my lady, one of the difficulties with it is that, although it may be thought at the moment, the bridge is just a relatively small thing, and in terms of the land take, compared with the overall garden village, it probably is, but decisions which are taken at this stage in the process, they may not inevitably mean that later development comes forward, but as and when it does, they are likely to shape and influence the way in which that happens. And so, for example, in this case, the location of the bridge will inevitably constrain the alignment of the link roads that are required to connect it. You will fix one element of the future scheme. And then, when that comes forward, that developer will be able to say, well, it's the only place the bridge can go, we've already spent eight million pounds on it, we're not going to demolish it and build another one. And so, we're stuck with what we've got. And in my submission, that's exactly why decisions need to be made earlier rather than later. And also, the reasoning does presuppose that applications will be made in an all-inclusive manner, and I stress, my lady, I have no reason to doubt the local authority's good faith. I note the reference in the judgment, that fact that it's not suggested that future applications would be made in a piecemeal process. But with respect, the identity of an applicant should not be the cornerstone here to whether or not EIA is required. One has to take an approach which is based on the principles that govern the consideration of the project. There is nothing which guarantees that there could not be, for example, an application for the link road on its own. There is nothing which would prevent an individual housing developer, once the bridge has been constructed, from coming in and acquiring an interest in the land and bringing forward a freestanding application for housing. Local authority may say it's premature pending the local plan, that may be the case. But it does involve an assumption at the moment that this will be the only piece of salami that is sliced, and the rest of the salami will come as a whole. And I do say that that is not necessarily the case. I stress, I'm not in any sense indicating there's anything to suggest the Council would do that in this case. But I do say that the reasons that are set out, paragraphs one-one-nine, one-twenty, do not in fact touch upon the proper legal approach in this case.
Can I ask a question about that? As I read paragraph one-hundred-and-twenty, the judge is countering a proposition that the defendant might be seeking to salami slice and has an intention of making or permitting piecemeal applications. And I haven't read the authorities as touching on purpose or intention or motive as part of the test. It's purely just a question of whether that's the effect.
Indeed, I mean, my lord, there are a number of other areas of planning law where, in the past, people have suggested intentions may or may not be relevant. Without taking your lordship to any of them, increasingly, the trend has been to strip things, strip intention out, because nobody has a window into the mind of a landowner or a, unless somebody is stupid enough to go out there and say, this is my intention, but most people don't. Generally, you have to look at, you can only look at these things objectively on the particular facts. The intention of an individual is not and should not be.
I hadn't understood that it was your case before Mr Justice Lane, that there had been an intent or a tend or a purpose to salami slicing in order to.
And that's why it's recorded, and quite clearly recorded in the way that it is.
Yes, I think that's the risk, that's the effect of treating the way that the Council did.
But I mean, my lord, at one stage, we would not have imagined that they would bring forward the bridge on its own. But the reasons for it, it's not because they're trying to salami slice and avoid EIA, but it has the consequence that there is no EIA at this stage of something which ultimately, if the scheme were to be brought forward as a whole, and let's assume that one had an application for outline permission for the whole of the site, one would then be asking the question, well, what is the consequence of putting the bridge there? Is this the best place to serve the development? Is there somewhere else? One could take that into account. Here, one can't, because there is no analysis of the wider impacts that it has, but it's why there should be.
If the scheme had been brought forward as a whole, I don't think anybody would be arguing that you shouldn't have an EIA.
No, my lady, absolutely right. My lady, just give it, my lady, those are my submissions, unless I can assist you any further.
Thank you very much. Anything? Anything? What shall we do? Turn to one?
Is it lunchtime yet?
I was wondering. You want to start? Yes, Mr Pereira.
Thank you.
Tell us when it's an convenient moment for you to break off. We expect you to.
I won't finish by lunchtime.
No, I don't think you would.
I'm going to deal with matters in this way. Some factual matters, which I'll take quite lightly, given the way that the fact is set out in the judgment, but there will be some references I'll give you and some that I will take you to, and there are six overarching factual matters. Then I will deal with the EIA ground, the last ground that you've heard, ground three, then the Sam Smith ground two, then the inconsistency or benefits and harms ground one. So I'll get through as many of the factual points as I can and seek to break at an appropriate time. So there are six overarching points, and they're all reflected in what the trial judge set out at paragraph six to twenty-six of his judgment. There are certain ones that I wish to emphasise. So first, the decision under challenge was taken in the context of an urgent need for Tewksbury to address the shortfall of housing and employment land that it faces over its current plan period and beyond. And this is part of the known context for the decision, and it's not in dispute. You've got the references to that in the judge's judgment, but can I give you some references now and then take you to one or two pages in the bundle? So Jonathan Dibble's witness statement, page two-hundred-and-thirty-seven, this is in the supplementary bundle, tab four, paragraph three onwards, and he there refers to the fact that in the emerging plan, the plan that's now been adopted, the Ministry of Defence land was proposed for allocation and then removed because the Ministry of Defence decided that it was no longer available, and that's what caused the shortfall. And there are some extracts from the plan in the bundle, which I would like to go to. So we're in the supplementary bundle at page two-hundred-and-forty-six, this is behind tab four. This is a exhibit to Mr Dibble's witness statement.
For a page?
Page two-hundred-and-forty-six. Did I say two-hundred-and-sixty-four? I made that.
Two-four-six. No.
I don't know what you said, I'll ask.
Two-hundred-and-forty-six. So this is the core strategy adopted on the eleventh of December twenty-seventeen, and it's a joint core strategy with neighbouring authorities, hence Gloucester is mentioned at the top. But then Tewksbury Housing Supply Review, seven-point-one-point-nineteen, identified shortfall against the total housing requirement of two-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-five dwellings, and it identifies the level of shortfall. The MOD Ashchurch strategic allocation was expected to deliver two-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-five dwellings to twenty-thirty-one. Despite the shortfall, Tewksbury can maintain at least six-point-three-year supply of housing land and sufficient sites to deliver housing in the short to medium term. It's critical that the shortfall is addressed over the plan period. JCS, that's the Joint Core Strategy of Authorities, are providing an approach to dealing with this in a strategic, plan-led way. And then at seven-point-one-point-twenty, there is the statement that Tewksbury will undertake a review of housing supply immediately after the plan. And if we go over the page, there are references made to uncertainties in the context of the review and future supply. Seven-point-one-point-two-one, there remains development potential within the Tewksbury Town Ashchurch area to meet the housing requirements. However, there exists barriers and uncertainty over delivery, deliverability of sites at the current time, which means any alternative strategic allocations are not possible now. The authorities committed to continue working with a review of the plan to identify and allocate sites. Seven-point-one-point-two-two, if we look at the last sentence of that paragraph, the challenge for these sites that remain available is around access, master planning and infrastructure provision. Seven-point-one-point-two-three, the reference to another site at Fiddington, and about halfway down that paragraph, has potential to meet development needs in the borough, however there are concerns about delivery. This revolves around highway infrastructure needs, and you get the tone of it. Finally, there's a reference to a bid for funding for growth. This will include facilitating early release of sites where available. And then further down, reference to supporting development delivery plan, including strategic master planning to provide a comprehensive approach which addresses issues such as place-making, transport and infrastructure. So it was known, and the members knew, and the officers knew, and the Council knows, that as a result of what's happened in their adopted plan, there is an urgent need, a priority, to try and resolve the question of how housing needs in Tewksbury are going to be met. Secondly, and we've seen it from some of those references, but I'll give you some more, it's clear from the evidence that the Council's approach is to adopt what planners call a plan-led approach to resolve the issues. That's to say, it's a strategic approach that considers allocating land within the development plan and having a coordinated approach through the provision of infrastructure and other necessary development. And we see that in the references I've just taken you to. I'm going to give you some other references. In the EIA screening report, tab one, page ten, Mr Dibble's witness statement, tab four, page two-hundred-and-forty-one, paragraph twenty-four, Mr White's witness statement, tab four, page two-hundred-and-seventy-four, paragraph thirteen. And it's also a strong theme in the officer's report, we'll come to that in due course, but I'll just give you the references now. Supplementary bundle, tab two, page one-hundred-and-twenty-eight, section eight, and tab two, page All of these references are to the effect that the Council's in the process of evaluating the potential impacts of the wider development, and that's being done under the development plan. And in the officer's report, noting that the application for the bridge does not prejudice the plan-led process, in other words, it doesn't determine the plan-led process. Thirdly, and the judge echoed these words in his judgment, the master plan that you've seen, which is rightly called a draft concept master plan, because it's not finalised in any way, the draft concept master plan is the first step in considering options for growth across Ashchurch. And none of the possibilities that have been looked at have any formal planning status at all. They are not the subject of any adopted or emerging policy. So there are no planning applications being, there were no planning applications being made for eight-hundred-and-twenty-six or three-thousand or any other numbers of dwellings reliant upon the bridge. There are concepts and potential for growth being worked through. So we're in a position where the future development in the Ashchurch area, the area you've seen in the draft concept master plan, holds the potential and the promise to overcome the housing delivery issues, but those matters are still under consideration. And in my submission, it's important that the Court grasps the reality of that, particularly when it comes to the EIA points, but also on the points of what can rationally or not be taken into account for the bridge application. There are no tangible development proposals for housing to use the bridge.
Which point, it's serving very little purpose at the moment?
It's serving a very important purpose, which is to keep the strategic planning process on track. And that's a very important purpose, because it's through the strategic planning process that the urgent need for housing for people in Tewksbury can be met. And it ought not to be controversial that a factor or development which is relevant to the timing of meeting legitimate planning needs can be taken into account in a planning decision, particularly when they're urgent planning needs, as they are here. So, my lady, in one sense, in the sense of having an operational function now, I accept the bridge is not serving that purpose at this point in time, but in the planning sense, as the judge found, of enabling the proper planning of the area and keeping the programme of the strategic plan on track, it serves a very important purpose, indeed a critical one, because it's accepted, not in dispute, as I understand it, with the claimants, that a bridge is needed to cross the railway line if this area is going to be unlocked for development. And that's also what the planning documents say. That's not a part of the analysis of the officer's report that's in dispute or criticised. My lady, I haven't finished my factual points, but if that's a convenient time.
Yes, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you. I pass to. I pass to you.